This is an invocation preamble. Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the meeting of the Fayette County Commissioners shall be the voluntary offering of a private citizen to and for the benefit of the county commissioners. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the county commissioners and do not necessarily represent religious beliefs or views of the county commissioners in part or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation, and such decision will have no impact on their right to actively participate in the business of the county commissioners. Having said that, I'd like to introduce Pastor Jeff Garrison. He is a missionary from Contra Baptist Temple to the Dominican Republic, and I would like to ask him to come forward and have a word of prayer for us before we start the meeting.
Thank you. Over to Jeff Garrison. Thank you so much, and let's look to the Lord's Prayer. Good gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your love, thank you send Jesus tonight, of course. Lord, we thank you for the opportunities of liberty that we have with these servants here, Lord, who come and take care of business here for our county. And, Lord, we ask to give them wisdom, help them to make good decisions. Lord, help the community to grow. We ask God your blessings on every person that's representative, and Lord, this asks that you would keep this meeting civil and accomplish your will. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. If you will remain standing, I'll declare this meeting the Fayette County Commissioners in order, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Good morning, welcome to the Fayette County Commissioners. If you'd be so kind, if you have a cellphone, to silence it or turn it off, I would appreciate it. Our first order of business will be the minutes. And does the Board have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I will second. We have a motion to approve the minutes of April 5th, and a special session on...
April 11th.
April 11th. I will second the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes. For the audience's benefit, Commissioner Vador is not here this morning. He's actually on assignment for the Commissioners. There's a meeting at the Hyatt Village Garage where some problems we're having down there. He's meeting with our architect and Mark Plumb from the County Council. Department reports. Mr. Richard Corum.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Been out sweeping roads where salt sand been put down over the winter. Got a lot of sand that's built up in intersections and stuff. We're down in the southern part of the county right now. We're going to eventually move all the way around the county, but it's going to take some time for that international to go. Got our water wagon all set up to pump water out where we can basically blast off the sand and stuff. What we can't get with the broom, we try to get with the water wagon. It's pretty good on the surfaces to get some of that salt and stuff off the rounded guardrails. Stuff like that. Got our spray patchers out last week. We said we'll get some RS2 over Terry Asphalt over Hamilton, Ohio. Finished that 150 north. Moved on over to 200 north today. Got a lot of rough spots we need to fill in. We get to them as soon as we can. Coverts, we put three more in since the last time we had our meeting. Got four more to put in. I'm waiting on coverts to come in. We ran out. Takes a week to 10 days to get them in. And the job down there south of Columbia is real bad. Waiting on the coverts installed down here. We went and looked at that. Back to maintaining roads or gravel roads, we'll try to stay on them all year round and stuff. So getting into dust lay, we're long to patching holes, patching everything. Get to them as soon as we can, and best we can with what we've got. And then that's it.
Any questions?
No.
I appreciate it, Richard. You're doing a good job. Tell the men we said so too.
All right. Thank you.
Before we go to the next one, I visited a bridge we're looking at replacing. It's called Bridge 25. It's the bridge in about the 4,500 block of west 300 north or Harrisburg Road. The bridge was built by the WPA in 1938. Several years ago, the federal government came through Indiana and looked at a bunch of bridges, and those that they thought held historic value were designated Select Bridges, which means they can't be touched for historical purposes, except under some very strict conditions. So yesterday, Butler Fairman representatives, representatives from Indiana's Department of Transportation and federal historical and state historical personnel were there. And we are working on the project. The problem is the bridge was built for traffic in 1938. Two vehicles cannot cross the bridge at the same time because the foundations are crumbling and for other reasons. We have reduced the weight limit on the, on the bridge. That is a direct route for the school buses. If I remember, there are 12 or 15 buses a day that go across that bridge. So if people wonder why all the cars were pulled off out there yesterday, that's the reason. It, it's a matter of we could replace the crumbling parts, but the problem is that they did some bore samplings on the deck and some on the side. And if you go down off of the bridge and down to the little creek area there, you can see exposed rebar. You can see the actual, the actual base that is crumbling and cracking. So we are working on that. We are under some really, really strict rules pertaining to its historicity. So when and if we get a decision on back on what we can or cannot do on that, I will report it back. But it's been, it's been the position of the Commissioners that respectfully, even though it's historic like that, George Washington didn't sleep on it during the Revolution. And it does have some, some nice designs, but rehabbing an old bridge like that, mixing the old and new, will not have the lifespan of a new bridge. A new bridge needs to accommodate modern day flow of traffic. Farm equipment is bigger and wider today than it was, I think by far it was in 1938. So at any rate, that's just a real quick report on that. If you have any questions, you can feel free to call me or the surveyor, but we are working on it. Courthouse maintenance, Mr. Gray.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Got a whole lot going on. We're still working on the outside lights. We're having problems getting the switch for it. There was a mix-up. They called and said that they sent us a quote. They didn't, they didn't actually order it. So it was two week delay, and now it's another two week delay. So, and we're having to replace a lot of ballasts now, but we got most of them working. Most of the ballasts are out, so we're still waiting on some of them to come in, then we'll get the county truck down and get those taken care of. I'm going to be outside more today. We've been painting in the jail. We got another block done. We got three, three more blocks to go. So it's just an ongoing thing.
Any questions?
No. Thank you for working so hard at maintaining this facility, all the facilities.
Thank you.
Community corrections, are we done over there?
I'm still working on that. I'm still waiting on a ballast for that one light. And I got with Bill the other day. We'll try to go one day this week and shut the power down to make sure, excuse me, the lighting, we got the lighting, the lighting is in, the emergency lighting is in. Just want to make sure that it's enough. So we got to shut all the power down so he can see them on, so he can tell us if it's enough or not.
Okay.
Before I go out there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Bobby Smith.
Sheriff Plowton. I have two 144s to approve, the applications here. One is for a part-time jail nurse, and one is for a new jail officer to replace Dan Becker who was promoted to the identity spot. Jane Ix has the 144 for the jail officer. The part-time nurse, we have two part-time nurses currently, David Hornsby and Annette Luark. This new part-time nurse is Deborah Meyer. She is a, she's a friend of David Hornsby. He had recommended her. He's worked with her. She came in and interviewed last week, seemed very eager to want to do this. The need is there. Saturday, David, who has horses, had a sick foal, and he got four calls Saturday while he was trying to deal with that. Two of them after midnight, one at 1:00 in the morning, one at 3:00 in the morning. And David has other places he works as well. This isn't an increase or anything. The money's still there. They will just split the hours, but it's just to kind of take a little of the pressure off of David and Annette. And the jail officer position, like I said, was created when Dan Becker was promoted to the road deputy position. That left an open slot on third shift. We held interviews, got down to three. The person we selected was Jaben Collins. He had worked at Newcastle Prison, had, had some rank up there, had a K-9. Did a wonderful job up there, works at Centerstone and worked part-time at Dispatch too. I'm sure Terry could give him a glaring review. She told me a few weeks ago that if I had a position come open, he would be a good hawker. So he interviewed very well, and he's who we selected, so.
He works how much? Does he sleep?
What's... I don't know.
Does he sleep?
Hopefully not always working third shift, which is sometimes hard to do.
It's hard not to.
Yeah.
I'll let her change the motion.
I make a motion to accept these recommendations from Sheriff Plowton.
I have a motion, and I will second the motion to accept these potential employees that the sheriff has presented to us. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Sheriff, thank you. Mr. King.
Got three computers in my bench right now. We're replacing the computer in the law library at the jail. So those are some of the things that are very time-consuming that I do while I'm doing other things. They tend to run in the background while I do that stuff. But that ticket system that I started using last month, of course, the first month you use anything, it doesn't really give you a true idea as you work into how to put things in, what things should go in, what shouldn't. But just in the last month, since we've been using it a full month now, we've had 217 tickets over basically 30 days. Yesterday I had 17, just yesterday, between people calling with different things, things that came up, regular stuff day-to-day. That's kind of how we're at. Broke down to 42 tickets for the city and 173 for the county, so. And then there were two that were everybody, like the public terminal upstairs for the clerk. That was a public thing. Somebody came to me from the public saying that it was acting weird with Odyssey. So I wouldn't have to look at that, so that would be a public one. So that kind of gives an idea of where we're at. Unfortunately, the free version that I'm using does not give me the pretty report with the graphs and the breakdown by department, so. And I'm not willing to spend $600 on it for one report.
So in the last 30 days, you had 217...
217.
17 trouble reports?
That doesn't count regular day-to-day stuff that we didn't put in there. Some, some of the day-to-day stuff, like my, my work on the firewall, I put in there as a ticket. But most of the day-to-day stuff wasn't in there. That was just somebody calls or emails and say, hey, I've got, my computer's doing this, my phone's doing this. In the case of TV3, they called with some problems with their phones for the last Garden Doctor Show 15 minutes before the show started.
That's an average of seven, that's an average of seven a day if you work seven days a week.
Yeah.
So you're probably closer to 10 a day.
And I, my last time sheet was 119 hours, so.
Okay.
So we still got a lot of stuff going on and being worked on. I'm trying to improve things, but I don't really have anything, things to get approved. I just wanted to get that stuff out there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Community corrections, our county attorney.
I have no report, unless you have questions, I can answer for you.
No, sir. I believe you answered the one for me yesterday.
Aye.
Is there a council representative here? Shirley, please. Good morning.
I'm here this morning regarding my subcommittee role for the Safety and Wellness Committee for the county. And we've met again, and a couple of things going on. Number one, we're hoping the 1st of May to begin a wellness education exercise program using the Commissioners' room here. We're waiting, Michael is helping us with another thing on his list, so that we can play DVD. But Nancy and the Auditor's Office has offered to host these classes, and one will be, I'm looking for my notes, one will be like on the noon break, like a lunch hour class, and the other one will be like on Thursday afternoon after people have left. So this is not something during work time, but after work time, but that people can take advantage of. It's, it's going to evolve. Nancy is working on a flyer to send out to everyone, and when that, that is ready, we would like to offer it to the county employees. The more important thing that I'm here to ask your approval this morning, I spoke with Troy Tipton, we met with Troy Tipton and Adrian Ellis and Bill Gray and myself several weeks ago, and we're working about the exit signs outside each office to let people know where they should exit. And also Adrian has available two additional AED devices for the courthouse. He's already delivered, I believe these came through a grant. He's already delivered the one to the basement, to the Health Department, and two people in the Health Department are trained, Paula and, I'm sorry, her name escapes me, but they are trained to do CPR and AED. Before Adrian puts the other one on this floor and the top floor, he is asking that we have CPR, AED training so that there could be at least two people trained on each floor of the courthouse, so that if there were an emergency, there would be a designated person. So anyhow, Troy has a person in his department, for the fire department, that does CPR training classes, and as a part of his job to keep them certified. So they have an availability next Wednesday from 1 until 4. It's a three-hour class, and he can do up to nine students during this training. We're hoping for at least six. Again, we have two already trained in the Health Department. Nancy again has offered to be trained, and I would like to go through the training, but I, I want to request the permission to send out a note, and maybe Jane can help us with this, if we can come up with the wording, looking for additional people on the second and third floor that would like to take the CPR, AED training. And Paula, during our subcommittee meeting, she showed us, demonstrated how simple that AED training is. I mean, there's more to it than what she did showing us, but it's not a very complicated thing, and many times it can save a life. So I'm asking for your permission to schedule that training with Troy Tipton. I don't remember the name of the gentleman's name, Nate Stevens, Nate Stevens, for the CPR training.
I believe in your letter, when you send it to the employees looking for those who want to do the training, it would help if you would remind them that the life they save could be someone they know. Those machines are very simple and very effective, and with, with any cardiac arrest, the time is of the essence. So it's extremely important that we have someone that can drop what they're doing and make a mad dash, grab it, and go and assist someone. Having said that, I have no objections to what you want to do whatsoever.
No. We're all in favor of it. It's way past, way past due, and we're very fortunate that nothing has happened, and we've not had a tornado or a fire or anything, and people didn't know which way to exit the building. So these things are all very important with our safety. Well, I think it is, and as a matter of fact, I spoke with Bill earlier, we're meeting Wednesday, and Adrian has provided some tornado safety posters, and I'm going to get some frames so that we can at least have one on each floor to at least what to do with that. And he's also working on finding the blank for the, to matches up the existing pictures that we have outside some of the offices. We just don't have them outside at all of the locations. So both of those are ongoing as part of the, our to-do list as far as the...
You mark.
...items we've expressed a need to work on.
Are you talking about exit signs or tornado, are you talking about an exit sign of tornado? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, there's a...
Or any emergency?
There's a separate tornado sign that talks about staying away from the wall and exiting to the bottom of the building, but then there's outside several of the offices on the walls, there's an exit that shows go to this door and go to that door. So the tornado is just head to the basement and stay away from, from walls, use interior, go to interior, stay away from windows and go to interior walls.
You might coordinate with Bill McDaniel. I think those signs will have to have braille on them. He can probably tell you or refer you to a source that does, but I'm fairly sure that if it's posted in a public building after a certain time, that the signs have to include braille.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. We're not out anything, but better be safe than sorry.
We'd rather have it correct before we put it up there than have to correct it afterwards. But again, that was, that was something that we are working on in addition to the, the lights for the...
For the citizens that are watching, these classes that they're going to have here in this room, it's not a Zumba class just so everybody can have fun. We, we are on a, on a real program to reduce the health claims of our employees, and by doing that, you make your employees healthier. Exercise is obviously a good way. I myself, before all this, determined I've lost 60 pounds, I've off two medications, and any employee who puts his or her mind to it can do the same. The healthier you are, the fewer claims you have, the less, well, actually, the more money we have to be able to spend on good policies. Our insurance is one of the single highest expenditures that we have, and it's a more important even than the money is the health of our employees. So this is not something frivolous, and it's not something that will happen overnight. It's a program that we're starting and, and hope to continue that will help our employees for the reasons I've already mentioned. I'm sorry. Please.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think many of us feel very strongly, like you say, for the health of our employees. That's, that is first in line, but ultimately, so that the county can, can recognize the savings, turn the, turn the direction around that our health insurance and liability insurance is being done.
Yes, ma'am.
So with, with your permission, we'll get the note out about the possibility for the CPR and AED training, and hopefully we'll have a good, we'll have a good turnout. We can get at least six, but again, he can teach up to nine.
Good.
Very good. Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you. Do we have any mail? No mail. Under old business, Justin, if I could get you to focus on the board. For those who are watching and for those who are present, this is the board that the Commissioners and the committee of veterans have chosen to replace the ones we have in the hallway. The board is a black background. It's plexiglass, and the names are spray painted on the back of the board. In addition, if you look, you'll see the graphics. That, that particular board, those are fictitious names. They are not local names. But if you look at the board and you see the graphics, you see them raising the flag at Iwo Jima. Those graphics can be more subdued, the colors, they can be brighter. These boards that we have currently, Mr. Joy, whom many of you knew, was an art teacher at the high school for many, many years. He worked on a lot of those by hand lettering them. However, the board stopped the Vietnam conflict. Nothing has been added for Bosnia, Desert Shield, Desert Storm, or as our committee suggested, a board that honors those for the War on Terror, Operation Enduring Freedom. So we have a lot of updating to do. In addition, we want to put out here on this south wall in the hallway, a separate board for all those who have given their lives and service to their country that came from Fayette County. I made a quick, quick count, and my count could be off quite a bit, but I walked through the hallways the other day and counted the stars by the names representing those who have died, and there were 91. And praise, pray to God, that's the last, but with our world being what it is, we know it probably will not be. We want to, for those who have been killed in action, we want to set up a very separate display, and so that any, any children, any adult that comes through here and looks at that realizes that someone lost a brother or a sister, husband, wife, friend, cousin, whatever, and that they made the ultimate sacrifice. So having said that, this is what we're looking at. We're doing it through a local company, Lilah Graphics, that fits in water, and I just wanted everybody to kind of get a look at it. I told one lady who was interested in correcting a misspelled name that she could access this by YouTube, which you can, and just go YouTube, go to Contra Bowl Indiana Channel 3, and you'll find the location there for Commissioners' meetings or council meetings, city council meetings, and just find the appropriate meeting. So if you know anybody who is interested in looking at this, please refer them to this program. And having said that, we'll go on to new business. Mr. Kaiser from the 48. I'm sorry. Mike Kaiser from the 48.
Mike Kaiser from 48. I'm here basically about this wall thing. Is this set in stone? This is what you're going to use, or?
That particular type?
Yeah.
With the exception of the, the, those who have killed in action, we, we, we were going to go with the second board, which was the individual engraved names. We were going to go with that because it can be easily added to. That's what we wanted to do for that one, but for all others, this one, yes.
Okay. I just wondered what the parameter, also what the parameters were to be on the wall.
We have a committee. We met a week ago today. We're just beginning, so my, my understanding, and please don't hold me to that, is that it's for those who served in a particular conflict, okay? Be it, and, and the question came up, I, I brought up Grenada. Be it, and the question came up, I brought up Grenada, Panama, a lot of which were conflicts, but so I don't know yet.
Well, basically you know what I showed you the other day about belonging to the American Legion? That's basically set by Congress.
Okay.
That's the only way that it's set, it's not set by the American Legion or anybody for them to be eligible to belong to the Legion.
Okay. And I did, I did not pass that out at the meeting because we will have other meetings.
Which is, that is, Congress is setting of what is a conflict.
Okay.
And it's actually been open since 1990. Anybody that's served since 1990 is eligible according to that.
Okay.
Because somebody asked me if it was just people who served overseas or in a combat zone. But there's a lot of people that are enduring that that don't go overseas. I was one of them, I didn't go to Vietnam, but I was in during Vietnam. Because there's also, probably most people don't know, there's actually five branches in the service.
Yes.
Okay.
Including Coast Guard, yes. We, actually, we, Ken Fall, who used to be prosecutor, his son, Justin, went to the Coast Guard from here, if I'm not mistaken, and David Counselor's daughter Julie was in the Coast Guard. I know of a few, so yes. And they will be included also.
Now, not to upset, upset the apple cart, but I had a vision of something different than this, like a huge wall monitor or a kiosk in front of it where you could just pick a war, a person's name, because all this has to be, all have to be on computer anyway, right, to do the graphics?
Yes. The names, yes.
Yes. And you could even put more information in there and the thing could scroll when it's not being used by a certain person. And just be in one place here and change a name, you just punch a name in that goes in there and it's in alphabetical order.
I would have to bring that before the committee.
Yeah. It's just a thought, you know? You know, you see other places have their, all their information on something like that and you just, you know, you could have a button there that says World War I, World War II, or you could type in somebody's name. And it could give a lot more information about that person, how long they've been, how many medals they have, if you have that information.
The advantage I see to this is that it's a, it's like the Vietnam Memorial or any other memorial. You can go there and you can stand there and look at that one name of someone that was special to you. Or you can look at the names from a particular group, particular time, if you're doing genealogy or any kind of research or something like that. The video part, the one thing that we did not discuss in our first meeting, but will be brought up, is for those who are missing in action.
Right.
And there's a missing in action official display that I don't think we would have room for in the hallway. So the committee member who talked to me, I suggested to him that a small television with a video loop of that, that display, as well as perhaps photos of Arlington Cemetery, the Vietnam Memorial, all the different memorials and stuff like that would loop through, generally talking about what you're talking about, but, but without, without names.
Yeah. Well, when you say that somebody could look on the computer or on the video thing, you could do the same thing, look somebody up in particular and it could scroll and have a button, like I said, a button there that says World War II, World War I, Civil War. You're going back to the Civil War, did you say? Or trying to?
We're going clear, well, we have, the board's out there, we have no go back to the Revolutionary War.
Oh, is there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. How does that work from Fayette County? I mean, you understand what I'm saying?
Those are, actually, that particular board has those who were in the Revolutionary Conflict and what cemetery they're buried in.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's unique among, well, I should say that, and up to the Spanish-American War, after that, the listed, the cemetery they were buried in is not listed.
Oh, okay. That's just my thoughts on it and it's a good thing we're doing this, we're doing this. And yeah, the four needs pulled back in.
Appreciate it.
Mined in monetarily if you need it.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hillman.
I'm John Hillman, I'm the president of the Whitewater Valley Railroad and I'm here to get permission for the use of the parking lots. This will be our 17th year for the event. We moved into the depot over here in the year 2000 and that's when the event started. And each year we have approximately between 10 and 11,000 people over the six days. And last year seemed like there was some confusion between us and you about what was what. And basically, we set up, we set up and take up all the parking lots, your lots and the city lot. And there was always some confusion with us, who had what, which was county and which was the city. And I think we got it straightened out, but I'm not sure, so I'd like to go a little bit more detail about the timeline of how we set this event up. And we actually start a week before by putting the main tent up over in the city lot. And they have to do that on Friday because the tent people don't work on Saturday and Sunday to come out in and out. And then Sunday night, we actually bring up a box car that's loaded from ceiling end to end, full of stuff that has to be unloaded and transported over to the tent. And it takes Sunday evening and Monday. And then we start on the other parts of the setup. And they start setting up more tents on Wednesday. And there's approximately eight or nine tents that have to be set up. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday, we start setting up the big tent with all the merchandise. We get close to three quarters of a semi-load of merchandise in. It has to be unloaded, opened, priced and stocked. And everything has to be done and ready by Friday morning. So we're requesting that what's in here about closing the lots on these days and taking up certain parts of the space on the days when the event's not going on. And this write-up I gave you exactly is exactly the same as what we've always done, we've just changed the dates. And trying to think what else.
Mr. Hillman, I don't think that we've had any problems of any major, but there's one thing, okay? And that's handicap spaces. Those have to be left available because handicap spaces, when they, when they, when they make those, when they set those aside, they set those aside for a certain amount of occupancy of the building like that. As long as there's business going on here, we have to have all of those handicap spaces available. On weekends, I don't think it's a problem, but we can't close, we can't just keep one or two open because those are numbered for the occupancy of the courthouse. That, that's why, that, to me, that's the only confusion, only significance that we've had.
Now, is that because the tent ropes were taking up a couple of the spaces?
Yes.
We've talked about that in the last week before the meeting here.
Okay.
And we're trying to get the tent moved farther east, open those slots up.
I appreciate that very much.
And I'm sure we can do that. Between the end of the tent and the street, we put dumpsters in there. And I think we can still put them in there. So I've been, all my people on the committee, we don't want to have the problem we had last year with those handicap spots.
Thank you.
And I understand it because we got the city to put handicap spots over by the old Burkhart lot in the city. So we know how important that is. So the tent people, they go by, I think like Google Earth and plot everything. So we're going to let them know that they cannot mess with those spots so that they can adjust them. So when their people come in, they start setting tents up, they don't intrude on those.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
But yeah, that was just one of those things that happened that, you know, we never thought about.
You want to say best laid plans of mice and men?
Yeah.
Having said that, do you want your motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve. I want you to know that the city parking lot does not go all the way to the courthouse, that there's a road parking where the handicap slots are, that is county property. That, most people think the city parking lot covers that whole area over here on the north side and that's incorrect, that road.
That's what we used to think.
Yeah.
But you have behind you and across, it's L-shaped.
Yes.
Okay.
So that was where part of the problem came in and then, like I said, like Frank said, with the handicap spaces. And I approve you using that space as long as you move the tent so it's not taking up our handicap space parking.
That's fine.
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we approve this.
I have a motion and I will second the approval of the schedule that Mr. Hillman has presented to us. Is there any discussion? Or some favors, Sigma Phi was saying aye?
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day.
Mr. Hillman?
Yes.
While you're here, would you like to advertise your train trip with the cabooses that Rotary and Bruce Bowden helped to?
That's next, you know, the 30th, that's April the 30th.
Okay, we'll not be having a meeting?
It's a special train and it's going to leave at 11 o'clock. It's going to be the five cabooses only that he helped restore. He raised over $30,000 to restore those. It cost a little over $6,000 just to restore one caboose.
Well, the Rotary Foundation donated a big chunk of that.
They sure did, and they've got a plaque of one of the cabooses. But those things will last a long time because we used a high-priced special wood. Before it was just like pine and after three or four years they'd start rotting. But this is a special wood that they bake all the rosin's out and everything. So it's going to last a long time. It's just a shame he's not here because he had his heart and soul in it.
Yeah, and a lot of ours are painting, I believe.
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our auditor, Kathy Rhodes. I'm sorry. That's too young for the day.
Yeah. Jane, you can have your job. And here, I want to correct one issue on, and I think, Mr. Baker, you have a copy of the contract with Master's Touch?
I've reviewed it.
Okay. It's advertised as software, but it's not software. It's really a service, a mailing service. So I'm here in asking permission, oh, Shirley left, Shirley Weiss from the council, she kind of encouraging us to go ahead and use a service for our mailing of our Form 11s. And really, so that's what you have, they have a proposal. And this being a first year, we're not quite certain what the postage cost would be, but it runs around like $4,000 to mail our Form 11s. And the ladies are real, they stuff as many as they can in. But this company is, it's Master's Touch and what they have is a service of e-notices that no other mailing service has, so there was no one else to, to get a quote from because we're really looking at the e-notices. But on that, we had a page from them that showed how much it would be for the envelopes and printing of the paper and the envelopes to mail. And the total for like mailing service, setting everything up, they're going to dismiss, if we can do it by June, they're going to dismiss a $700 setup fee, which they would normally charge, but they would really like to be able to provide the service for us. So that total would be $1,900 and plus the postage. And they say what they could mail it cheaper than what we do, around like $4,000 is what we have the postage cost to mail these forms. And then eventually, and I talked with the ancestor in Clinton County, and they've used this Master's Touch for a couple of years now. And what they can do is also, there's a setup fee for the $285 for setting up an e-notice so that eventually people, and we won't have anything to do in our office, they take care of setting up and collecting the emails. And people will be able to sign up, go to a site, sign up to receive these Form 11s by email instead of by paper mail, which eventually will decrease the cost of our postage. And the ancestor in Clinton County said, they have maybe like 15,000 parcels and we have about 14,000 parcels. So she said about 400 people so far have signed up for this e-service, which will, it costs a little bit, setup $150 and one cent per notice. So eventually it will be cheaper if people do use the email service. And this isn't, it's a year-to-year service, so we're not tied into a contract for so long. It's just a year-to-year service. And we have now, I didn't put anything on the postage machine, we have an old postage machine and so, but it's still working. We really baby it upstairs in the office. But we have enough postage to pay for the postage this year, but.
So what's the total price?
Don't know yet, Frank, because we've never done this before. So it could cost, they're thinking it would be maybe around $3,000 to go ahead and mail our postage compared to maybe the $4,000 that we have.
But the cost of the contract is going to be based on the amount of postage?
And since, and hate to be the gray area here, they really, we had some companies that did not offer the service, there's Worrel and there's another, the Sally D. Mailing, and they both charged, gave a proposal of $7,000 to do this service where they're only looking at maybe 4,000, 4,500 to go ahead and do the printing and the mailing included.
Jane, is this one of the contracts that you emailed John that he had reservation about?
This one I didn't. It was the appeal man that he sent.
Or he has a question about that, about the appeal man?
Yes. He sent suggested wording that I forwarded to Kathy.
Yes, I just copied and sent it.
What fund would you pay for this fund?
This would come out of the postage. And then if it's anything over, see, that's, so I hesitate, I mean, I know it, I don't know what it's going to cost. And it kind of scared me to do it because we can really almost do it cheaper, we're one person short, but you know, we could do it if we had to mail it ourselves. And the girls are really good about putting like five, you can do five papers in an envelope and mail it for a person. Well, and the postage just went down too, so it would be less. But I'd use the postage, what we have approved for this year, haven't used that $5,000 yet. And then we have some left in, on the postage machine from last year that we'll go ahead and do the rest of our business with. But then if, you know, if it costs more than we could pay for out of the supply fund.
So if it winds up being $7,000?
I hope.
And we hope it doesn't, you have the monies to cover that.
I have the $5,000 postage. See, that, well, that's what's concerning with me, I know they wanted to do it and you don't know what it's going to cost exactly until the first time. But when they're calculating, postage could range between like 37.6 and 41.9. But you know, if you can put, it would be, they can bulk mail, we don't bulk mail right now, we just.
Okay, so.
Okay, so, let's say that for some reason, it does turn into $7,000. Do you have the fund, would your perpetuation fund make up the difference? Is it, would it qualify for that?
No.
Okay.
That sales just wasn't...
So, do you have, would you have other funds that if it exceeded that amount that you could rely on to pay for that, that would qualify?
We'd have the $5,000 in postage I mean, and if we had the envelope, the printing of, so that's why I asked them too, because I didn't want to, I hate to be so vague, because I don't know what the treasurer pays in their fund when they mail the tax statements out. And I think they mail about what we have. And what would save too, it would be when we get back to mailing, to have to re-mail our forms because maybe they moved, or maybe there's no forwarding. So, it would save a little postage there, but I don't have, there's not another fund. It would probably have to be like an additional on the postage. And I know that's not what we're looking for. But I think council, a couple of members...
Do they make out the forms, Kathy, and do the printing so that you're saving also on paper and copy?
It's a copier and toner and paper and the envelopes.
So, there are other expenses that you normally have with the Form 11s that they would be doing all of that?
So, that's why when I talked to this company, I was concerned because this is being first year, not knowing how much it would cost. But they're assuring that it would be less than, it would be around $4,000 to mail our $14,000 parcels because what happens, they'll put up to five in an envelope, and they run off too, like we do, you run off alphabetically so everybody shows up in alphabetical order. Then I told them, says, we only have that much money in the fund, postage, $5,000. And then maybe we could pay for the envelopes and the printing of the Form 11s. So, they have to, there would be printing of our envelope and printing of the Form 11s.
So, all of that is included in what they would do for you?
That would be like the, you know, the $1,900. So, they're figuring like $4,000, $4,500. And like I said, I'm just presenting it because it was suggested that we, one or two of the council members, but maybe it might cost a little more now, but with the e-notices, eventually, it could become less expensive because more people would get it through the email.
I kind of feel like I'm buying a pig and a poke.
I know.
I don't, it's whittling around like a pig, but I don't know for sure that it is because we don't have any top end on this. I mean, if they wind up billing us for $7,000 and they say, well, we're looking at $3,500, I mean, they've doubled it and we have no recourse.
That's what the other two companies, and I really questioned them on that, but they said they don't know how they came up with so much figuring out postage. I hate to be so vague. Put you in a spot. If you want to think about this, you can.
Okay, when do you have to, when do the Form 11s have to go out?
Right now, we can't. We're waiting on ag values from the state to be able to post, to get ready to send our values to the auditor, so probably looking like over May. And we could send it anytime this summer, May or June. Usually, we go out in August.
Why don't you email a copy of the contract to the attorney for his review?
I think, Mr. Baker, do you have a copy?
No.
Master's Touch.
Oh, you did not send it to this one?
Yeah, I looked it over.
Okay, because I think I put one in your bell box or...
Yeah, I think we included a little...
That was, yeah, I have two contracts. I had that other one from last time on the software and that appeal man. And if not, I'll go ahead and I'll make another copy for you.
Yeah, I recall looking at it, but let me refresh my memory. I'll take a look.
And I'll see, because I said, I know, I hadn't even come and asked this because it is such a vagueness on the part of what it will cost. And if you don't, you know, if it doesn't work out well the first year, then we don't, it's not a continual contract.
Okay, let's, I think we'll delay this. Please go ahead and make sure Mr. Victor's memory is refreshed. And then, if you can get them down to more specifics, the more specifics we have as far, I don't mind voting for something that has an ballpark figure, but something that's open-ended like that, I don't feel comfortable with that.
I totally understand. I wanted to present it because, like I said, council was looking at, you know, cost savings, and eventually, this could be, you know, with cost savings. And I said Clinton County, I talked to them, and they have more parcels too, but maybe I can call around other, see other counties that might have it and what it would cost them to because...
Okay.
Thank you very much, but I think we're gonna postpone making any decision on this.
I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Ms. Penner? I'm sorry. Mrs. Penner Havel, I apologize.
It's almost been a year, I still consider myself a Pennsman. I am here to get a Form 44 approved. I have lost approximately four dispatchers within the last two weeks. So, I have three applicants in front of you that I would like to bring on board for part-time. One of them has dispatch experience, another one is an ex-deputy and prior dispatch experience as well. The other one brings some law enforcement on. I still need to do one background check on one of those, so I don't want, not that it's a big secret, but I don't want to disperse their names yet just in case that falls through on one of them, which I don't believe it will, but I'm needing to bring them, bring some people on for part-time.
Okay, and I will discuss it with you privately.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, the other two, unless Mrs. King has an objection, I would entertain a motion for approval. Go ahead and get you started.
Thank you.
Make a motion for approval on the two. And you and Frank can discuss the other one.
Okay, that's fine.
I have a motion, and I will second the motion to approve these two right here, Mr. Clinton Brown and Lisa Wyatt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes.
Thank you.
If you could, can, do you have time to hang around after the meeting?
Ooh.
Okay.
My apologies, Frank.
Your Majesty, thank you. We have one other thing, our new business, it's the Pacer. That's an acronym, P-A-S-E-R. What this is, is for the counties of the state to become eligible for upcoming federal grants. They want a, they want an up-to-date technologically advanced survey of our roads. And what this would do, there would be a truck loaded with GIS equipment, cameras snapping up to, oh, I think the number was 100 photos a minute or something like that. They drive every road in the county, gravel, paved, unpaved, pioneer trail, whatever. And they take pictures of it and they map it out, and they classify our roads on a scale of one to 10. And one being something you couldn't get a horse and cart over to 10, which is, we just cut the ribbon and it's brand-new. Now, there has been a letter to the editor suggesting that those statistics are already available, and what I'm telling you is that they need an up-to-date current study done by electronic means. So, that's, it's not wasting money, it's doing something to qualify for money. Having said that, I reached out to two companies, USI Consultants and Butler Fairman. Butler Fairman came in with the lowest quote of $29,112. That's back in February, does that still hold, Mike?
That's true.
Okay. The USIs, I don't have their exact figure, but it was closer to $47,000. So, having said that, we need to get moving on this. Mrs. King, do you have any questions?
No. I'm like you, the letter to the editor stated that there was records on file with the current condition of our roads, and that's incorrect because these, this is what the government calls asset management, and we have to be able to define this and prove it, and it has to be done a little more professionally than it had been done before. And if we want to get any federal dollars or grants for help for our county, we need to do this. It's not wasting money because if you want a government grant, any matching dollars for the bridges that we need and for the roads that we need, we have to have this done. So, I make a motion that we accept the Butler Fairman bid.
I have a motion to accept the Butler Fairman bid. I will second that. Is there any discussion? I might add that all this information has to be current. So, as valuable as some of those former statistics are, they are not current. Having made the motion, heard the second, and there's no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, the motion is passed. Having said that, do we have anything else, Madam President? There's nothing else to come before the board. Are there any patron concerns? Mary?
I would have thought satellites could have done that, Frank.
Oh, no.
I could get right down to pinpoint, I mean, make them watch an ant crawl down the road. I can't believe, you know, that they need us to drive around, but that's okay. I mean, I just...
The government says they don't, the government says they don't have any of that, that accurate, and we know that to be true. Any other questions, comments?
I would comment that I'm sure that those satellites can look down there, tell us how many ants are crawling across that road. However, then they would have to pay someone in the government up there to translate into a language that you as commissioners and we as council and the people in the highway department need to use. There's already been enough said about our highways and roads. We need to have an accurate place to start, and I would say, I would agree with anyone that says, and I didn't read the letter to the editor, but all you have to do is go out and ride them up and down. And everyone feels pretty darn strongly about how the roads are in their corner of Fayette County, but not too many of us are going around analyzing how they are in the opposite corner of the county. And in order to make, and I've said this many times, in order to make good decisions by the commissioners and the council on where to spend our limited resources, that inventory is very important. You have to know where you're gonna begin in order to, and where you've got to go.
It is more than just inventory because you can have a stretch of road, and the beginning stretch of this road could be an eight or a nine, but in the middle, it could be a three. Those photographs are going to show, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's some kind of substructure damage, also if it's sinking in, whatever. And this is because of the recently released infrastructure monies from the federal government and state monies also. You do this or you don't get them, it's that simple. So, no one enjoys spending $30,000 unnecessarily, but this is not unnecessarily, this is very high-tech equipment, and it's going to give us as accurate an assessment of our roads as is humanly possible with today's technology, and we'll go from there. Any other patron concerns? Going once, going twice? Having said that, I'll approve, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of claims and payroll.
So moved.
I will second the approval for the claims and payroll. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes. Nothing else to come before the board? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And I will second the motion for adjournment. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, we are adjourned.